Welcome, everybody. We're going to get started. You are tuning into the Remote Public Comment Hearing for the Freedom Plaza Project's Draft Environmental Impact Statement. Thank you for joining. Today's date is August 21st, 2025, and the time is now approximately 5:05 PM. Please note that this session is being recorded. For those of you who have logged into Zoom and require language access services, please click the Interpretation button on the bottom of your Zoom screen and select the applicable language. For those of you on a mobile device, tap the three dots in the lower right and select Interpretation, then select the applicable language. Interpretation is only available through computer audio or voiceover internet protocol and not through dial-in or telephone audio. No one has requested language interpretation for this session. If any comments on the draft environmental impact statement are received in tonight and languages other than English, they will be translated and considered. Additionally, I want to recognize that the American Sign Language interpretation will be continuous through the main window. It is my understanding that we have one registered speaker that has requested such interpretive sessions and services. If you are watching this video conference and experience audio issues, please access the audio by dialing 929-205-6099. Use meeting number 870-6284-8903 and pass code 371706. Good evening. I'm Robert Williams, and I'm the Executive Director of the New York State Gaming Commission. I'll be presiding over tonight's public hearing in accordance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which is commonly referenced as SEACRA. The Commission is the lead agency for Freedom Plaza's environmental review. As lead agency, the Commission has been overseeing the preparation and completion of an environmental impact statement for the project. For historical context, on April 18th, 2025, the Commission assumed designation as the SEACRA lead agency for the Freedom Plaza Project's application to construct a commercial casino and associated development at 700 through 708 First Avenue. Their proposal is located on lots 1 and 2 of Manhattan Block 970 on the east side of Manhattan. It is bounded by First Avenue to the west, East 41st Street to the north, FDR Drive to the east, and East 38th Street to the south. The site is located near the United Nations Complex, the East River, open spaces, and public transit. The project is across FDR Drive from New Wave Pier and across East 41st Street from the Robert Moses Playground. The facility is, of course, contingent on the issuance of a commercial casino gaming lot facility license by the New York State Gaming Commission. As the proposed action is discretionary, it is subject to the environmental review under SEACRA. The Commission determined the project to be a Type 1 action and accordingly, Freedom Plaza Project applicant prepared Part 1 of the full environmental assessment form. After reviewing and analyzing the Part 1 form, the Commission prepared Parts 2 and 3, and on May 2nd, 2025, found the proposed action has the potential to result in one or more significant adverse environmental impacts in one or more environmental areas and determined that a draft environmental impact statement, or DEIS, was required and must be prepared. As required by SEACRA, Freedom Plaza's environmental team, in consultation with the Commission, prepared a draft scope of work. The Commission circulated its positive declaration, notice of SEACRA scoping session, and draft scope of work to involved and interested agencies and published the notices in the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation's Environmental Notice Bulletin on May 7th, 2025. The Commission then conducted an extended SEACRA scoping session for the project in May to obtain public input on the scope of work. Ultimately, a scope of work was finalized and posted to the Commission's website. And on August 1st, 2025, the Commission determined the draft environmental impact statement was complete for the purpose of public review. The Commission published a notice of DEIS acceptance and public hearing in the August 6th, 2025 edition of the Environmental Notice Bulletin and in a newspaper of general circulation. To ensure the greatest participation, the Commission also sent letters to each entity that was included on our list of involved and interested agencies, sent emails to each elected official where the project is situated, and sent emails to every party that has requested notification regarding this project. It is also my understanding that tonight's public hearing has been promoted in social media. As required by law, the draft environmental impact statement evaluates the potential significant adverse environmental impacts of the proposed Freedom Plaza project and addresses various measures to mitigate these impacts. The environmental issues addressed in the DEIS include land use, zoning, and public policy, socioeconomic conditions, community facilities and services, open space, shadows, historic and cultural resources, urban design and visual resources, hazardous materials, water and sewer infrastructure, solid waste and sanitation services, energy, transportation, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions and climate change, noise, public health, neighborhood character, construction, effects on disadvantaged communities, alternatives, mitigation, unavoidable significant adverse impacts, growth-inducing aspects of the project, irreversible and irretrievable commitment of resources, and cumulative impacts. We are here tonight to receive comments on Freedom Plaza Project draft environmental impact statement from elected officials, government agencies, community board chairs, and members of the public. The public comment period will remain open until September 5th, 2025, with written comments accepted until 5:00 PM on that date. Written comments may be submitted by electronic mail or by mail to the addresses on the screen. Once the comment period ends, the Commission will review all comments and determine what changes or additions, if any, need to be made. The Commission will then issue a final environmental impact statement. Tonight's session is divided into three parts. During the first part, we will receive a brief overview of the Freedom Plaza Project and a summary of how the applicant has proposed to mitigate potential significant adverse environmental impacts. During the second part, we will receive comments on the draft from elected officials, government agencies, and community board chairs. During the third and final part of the session, the Commission will receive comments from the public. Our hearing will end only when everyone who has signed up to provide testimony by 7:00 PM has had an opportunity to be heard. Tonight's hearing is not a question-and-answer session, but is intended to provide an opportunity for interested groups, technical specialists, community representatives, and the public to provide input on the adequacy of the draft environmental impact statement, including, for example, substantive or significant environmental issues raised, measures to mitigate potential significant impacts, and alternatives. To that end, all speakers should start by identifying the specific environmental issue or issues they wish to address. Onto a few logistics for tonight's public comment hearing. For those who have pre-registered an interest in providing comment, we will call you in the order received. For those who have joined tonight without pre-registration, if on telephone, you may dial *9 to indicate your desire to provide oral testimony. If on video, you may indicate your desire to provide oral testimony by using the raised-hand indicator. Participants using the raised-hand function or *9 will be added to the end of the pre-registered speaker list in the order in which they raise their hand or press *9. The option to speak, the sign-up to speak, that is, will end at 7:00 PM. If you are reading prepared comments, it would be helpful if you email your comments to kristenbuckley, that's K-R-I-S-T-E-N dot B-U-C-K-L-E-Y at gaming dot N Y dot gov. When it is your turn to speak, your name will be called or the last four digits of your phone number will be read. You will be granted temporary speaking privileges by the session administrator, which will allow you to temporarily unmute your microphone. Please note that promoting speakers can take some time, so we do appreciate your patience. Once again, when your name has been called, unmute your microphone or telephone and start your remarks. To allow us to hear from everyone who wishes to speak, we ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes. You will note a three-minute countdown clock will run on the screen. You will be advised when 10 seconds are remaining and when time has expired. Lines will be muted for speakers who go past three minutes. If you join by telephone only, we will announce when the three minutes have passed. For those participants utilizing interpretation services, five minutes of speaking time will be allotted. If you wish to only provide written testimony, you may submit them to the Commission either by mailing them or emailing them to the addresses on this slide. Again, comments must be submitted no later than 5:00 PM on September 5th, 2025. Joining us next is Max Stember Young, a senior project manager at Langin Engineering and Environmental Services. I'd like Max to begin the session by providing a short project presentation on behalf of the applicant, after which he can discuss any mitigating elements of the draft environmental impact statement that he would like to highlight. Mr. Stember Young?
Thank you. Hello, everybody. My name is Max Stember Young. As noted, I am a senior project manager at Langin Engineering and Environmental Services, and I will be giving a brief overview of the project on behalf of the applicant team and the findings, summarizing the findings of the DEIS. So, Freedom Plaza, DEIS Public Hearing. A quick reminder of where we are in the process. In May, an EA form and positive declaration were accepted and published by the Gaming Commission. A public scoping meeting was held late in May of this year. The scoping comment period closed in June of this year, and a DEIS was published on August 1st. Today, we are at the DEIS Public Hearing, and the end of the DEIS Public Comment Period ends on September 5th of this year. A final EIS is projected to be completed by the end of September of this year, and the Gaming Commission anticipates issuing a gaming license before the end of December of this year. So, a quick overview of the proposed project. As noted before, the project site is located between East 38th and 41st Street, First Avenue, and FDR Drive on the east side of Manhattan, close to the East River, the United Nations, on the east side. The site is currently vacant, but is improved with a temporary art exhibit called "The Path of Liberty," that which unites us, and as part of that temporary exhibit, the site has improvements such as screens, walking paths, vegetation, gravel areas, a tent, and the picture of the existing condition is on the right. When the temporary exhibit finishes, the site will return to its vacant condition. However, in 2008, the project site received an approval from the New York City Planning Commission and the New York City Council to develop a four-tower scheme, as shown on the right here. It allowed three residential towers on the south end of the site and a commercial tower on the north end of the site, and approximately 3.1 acres of open space and other amenities. We'll get to the Freedom Plaza site plan in a second, but it's important to note that the proposed Freedom Plaza site plan would retain two of the approved residential towers along the south end of the site, wholly within the footprint and envelope of what was approved in 2008. The proposed project would also increase the amount of open space on the project site from the approved 3.1 acres to approximately 4.77 acres in the proposed scheme. So here, you can see the proposed includes two residential towers on the south end, which is drawing left here, and two hotel towers on the north end of the site, which is drawing right here. First Avenue is on the north of this graphic for your orientation. So a few representations of what the proposal would look like. This is a view from the East River Ariel. The project was designed to generally be consistent with other buildings in the nearby area, including the UN Secretary Building, the Corinthian, and the Copper Building, which is another recent development nearby. Here is another view from Roosevelt Island in context with the UN Secretary Building on the right hand of the side, or right side of the frame, and Freedom Plaza's two towers shown in the middle of the frame. A central part to Freedom Plaza is this proposed green space network, and this is a view shown from generally above East 39th Street and First Avenue, looking east towards the East River and the Queen's skyline. The proposed project includes a step up from First Avenue into this urban park setting, a park that would be designed and maintained wholly by the applicant and open to the public. Here's another view of the site from above FDR Drive. First Avenue is on drawing, the top of the drawing. 41st Street is on the right of the drawing. You can see there on the left is the residential tower, and in the center on the right are the two proposed hotel towers. The circular building in the middle of the frame is the proposed museum called the Freedom of Democracy in Freedom. So an important element of Freedom Plaza is how people access the different uses. The proposed gaming facility component of the project would only be directly accessible off of FDR Service Road. The hotel component museum would be accessible from First Avenue, and importantly, vehicular traffic for the gaming component would only be allowed onto the site from the FDR Service Road. The hotel would have a port-cocheer accessed from East 41st Street, and the residential uses would be accessed from East 38th Street, which is drawing left here. Another important thing to note is that the proposed casino would be wholly below the proposed open space, which would be at the FDR Service Road level, so below First Avenue, which is about an elevation 23 feet. So the casino will not be able to be seen from First Avenue at all. It would be tucked under the proposed Freedom Plaza development. So, the Freedom Plaza requires three different discretionary actions. One is a gaming license from the New York State Gaming Commission for the gaming facility component of this project. The project also requires two waterfront actions. One is a title wetlands permit from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and that is for work in the East River related to a proposed intake and discharge of water from the East River to help minimize energy consumption in heating and cooling the building. And similarly, a nationwide permit 3, or number 7, or both will be required from the New York State, sorry, the United States Army Corps of Engineers. These two waterfront actions will be applied for after the New York State Gaming Commission issues a gaming license. So as was described in the draft and final scope of work, the EIS proposed and analyzed the analysis framework shown on the screen, looking at the different potential uses within Freedom Plaza, and the EIS used this analysis framework to conduct the impact analyses. As was noted earlier, the DEIS was prepared in accordance with the final scope of work, which incorporated comments that were received during the scoping process. The DEIS also incorporates comments from the New York State Gaming Commission as well as other involved and interested agencies, including MTA, the New York City Department of Transportation, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the New York City Mayor's Office of Environmental Coordination, New York City Parks, the New York State Department of Transportation, New York City Department of Environmental Protection, the New York State Historic Preservation Office, and the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission. As has been mentioned several times, the DEIS was published on August 6th, 2025, and is available on the Gaming Commission's website. So for all of you participating today, we have developed, in consultation with the Gaming Commission, a summary of key findings of the DEIS. We heard from many people concerns about historic and cultural resources, being that Freedom Plaza is near the Tudor City Historic District. The DEIS analyses were reviewed again by the State Historic Preservation Office and the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission, both of whom determined Freedom Plaza would not have a significant adverse impact to a historic resource. The project would not directly affect a historic resource, meaning there would be no alteration, physical alteration, of an existing historic resource. However, there would be indirect effects from the project. Again, both the State Historic Preservation Office and New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission reviewed and determined that shadows from the proposed project on Tudor City Historic District and the United Nations Headquarters Complex would not be significant and adverse. Importantly, the View Corridor from the Tudor City Historic District along East 41st Street would be retained with the project, and Freedom Plaza would not include flashing or illuminated signage along First Avenue, therefore fronting into the Tudor City Historic District. So, one of these representations here, this is the View Corridor from the eastern terminus of East 41st Street within the Tudor City Historic District. On the left, you can see what is approved today on the site from the 2008 approval. And on the right, it's shown what we see from Freedom Plaza if it is proposed, or sorry, approved as proposed. You can see, you'd be able to see more of the sky in the right graphic than in the left graphic, and their View Corridor along East 41st Street would remain from this important lookout from the Tudor City Historic District. Natural resources. So the site itself was a former manufactured gas plant, and the site was disturbed during the construction and then demolition of the plant, and also during remediation actions on the soil on the site. The site is wholly outside of any tidal wetland adjacent area. As I mentioned earlier, the project proposes to minimize its energy consumption by using water of the East River to supplement heating and cooling in the building. So the project would intake water from the East River. A fish screen would redirect fish and other aquatic life back to the East River in advance of the thermal exchange. After the thermal exchange, the water would be discharged back to the East River. All the intakes and discharge would be to New York State Department of Environmental Conservation standards as well as EPA standards. As reported in 2019 by New York City Parks, no submerged vegetation is known to grow in the East River, which is a fast-moving tidal strait. That is more than 2,500 feet wide near the project site. As mentioned earlier, both the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and the United States Army Corps of Engineers will review a title wetlands permit and the nationwide permits for the proposed intake and outtake tunnel improvements in the East River, and that will be done as part of a future joint permit application. Regarding water and sewer. So for stormwater, stormwater is proposed to be directed to the East River either by using existing closed-in-place tunnels between the project site and the East River or by discharging two cities' stormwater sewers in FDR Drive. So the strategy here is that the stormwater being discharged to the East River would avoid discharge to the combined sewer, thereby minimizing the potential for combined sewer overflow events. A preliminary hydraulic and hydrologic analysis was completed for the project, and it found that sewer capacity for Freedom Plaza exists in East 38th and East 41st Streets to accommodate the projected wastewater. That hydrologic and hydrologic study will be reviewed by the New York City Department of Environmental Protection during the site connection permit process. And if sewer upgrades are determined to be needed, they would be designed and constructed by the applicant in coordination with the New York City Department of Environmental Protection. Again, no sewer upgrades are anticipated at this time. Most of all, Freedom Plaza will comply with all the underlying regulations, including the Clean Water Act and New York City's Unified Stormwater Rule. So traffic is one of the areas where significant adverse impacts were identified. The EIS analyzed 13 intersections across four peak hours for capacity analyses. Out of the 13 intersections that were analyzed, 10 were identified as potentially receiving significant adverse impacts. Now, out of these 10 areas, 10 intersections that could result in a significant adverse impact, five could be fully mitigated with the mitigation measures proposed in the EIS that includes signal timing changes and lane restriping, and five intersections could experience either a partial or unmitigated impacts. So the graphic on the right shows you the 13 intersections that were analyzed. The grayed-out ones, no significant adverse impact was identified at those intersections. The green bubbles show where significant adverse impacts can be fully mitigated. The yellow intersection shows where a partial mitigation can occur, and red shows the potential locations for unmitigated significant adverse impacts. Beyond the capacity analyses, the applicant is committed to conducting a transportation monitoring plan in coordination with New York City DOT, and that plan would monitor traffic conditions once Freedom Plaza is constructed and fully operational so that New York City DOT will obtain real counts of the realized traffic generated by the project. The applicant will also implement a transportation management plan, which we will talk about in a few slides, but additional transportation mitigation and improvement measures would be implemented by the applicant based on the findings of the transportation monitoring plan. The DEIS also analyzed transit and specifically Grand Central Terminal, MTA subways, Metro North Railroad, Long Island Railroad, MTA buses, citywide ferry services. No transit impacts were identified at the 4, 5, 6, 7 S subways or the M15 SBS bus route. Similar to Metro North, Long Island Railroad, and citywide ferry service, no impacts were identified there. However, 45 stairways were analyzed at Grand Central 42nd Street subway and found that there is the potential for two impacts at stairways in the PMP hour. So Stairwell S11 is on the south side of East 42nd Street, just east of Lexington Avenue. That stairwell could receive a significant adverse impact. And then Stairwell M12, which is accessed And then Stairwell M twelve, which is accessed at a lower level from the street, could also receive a significant adverse impact as a result of Freedom Plaza. Pedestrians was also analyzed, seventy-two pedestrian elements in total were analyzed for capacity analysis. Out of those seventy-two, significant adverse impacts are projected to occur at thirty-three pedestrian elements. That includes nine crosswalks, eight corners, and sixteen sidewalks. With the mitigation described in the D E I S, up to eighteen of those elements would remain unmitigated. And those would be along a combination of East Forty Second, East Forty First Street between F D R Drive and First Avenue, and United Nations Plaza between East Forty First and Forty Second Streets. The transportation management plan will be implemented as well to improve overall pedestrian circulation with signage, free shuttle to Grand Central, and a full-time transportation coordinator amongst some of the proposed measures to help manage demand. So here are the transportation management and monitoring plans description of what would happen. So to help manage some of the pedestrian volumes coming between the project site and Grand Central, the applicant proposes a free twenty-four-seven shuttle between the project site and Grand Central Terminal and the ferry. Potential trips, pedestrian trips that may use the shuttle were not accounted for. They were accounted for in the pedestrian analysis. They were not put on a shuttle, so this should help reduce the pedestrian concerns. The transportation management plan would also introduce wayfinding and signage, a traffic control professional or multiple professionals would be implemented either onsite or on the street network. Freedom Plaza would regularly provide travel guidance via its website to potential customers. And they would work with maps providers such as Google Maps and Waze to make sure their services are updated and making sure black cars or taxis are dropping off in the correct locations as required. The applicant will also coordinate rideshare and transit shuttle service. And communication will be done via social media and other apps to help manage demand during peak periods. As well, parking garage partnerships and parking passes may also be provided. And vouchers could also be included for nearby off-site parking lots. As for the traffic monitoring plan, again, that will be developed in coordination with the Gaming Commission and New York City Department of Transportation, and will assess feasibility of the proposed traffic improvements. It will measure the actual travel demand generated by Freedom Plaza once it's built and fully operational, giving New York City Department of Transportation fresh data to make decisions on potential improvements in the street network. The findings of the T M P will identify modifications to propose traffic mitigation and improvement measures as needed. So again, providing New York City D O T with a realized condition on the ground. Through all of this, the applicant will collaborate with the New York City Department of Transportation and other relevant agencies, including the M T A, to implement improvement measures on the surrounding street network. As for parking, Freedom Plaza proposes fourteen hundred and fifty spaces on site. The weekday projected peak parking demand will have a surplus of fifty-five spaces. The weekend projected peak parking demand may have an onsite shortfall of a hundred and sixty-five spaces. So as a part of the D E I S, an off-site public parking survey was completed, which found that during the weekend peak periods, there's a surplus of at least thirty-five hundred available spaces at off-site public parking facilities. So those would be able to accommodate any parking shortfall during the peak weekend periods. I should also mention that these transportation projections have been developed using the New York City Department of Transportation's trip generation rates, which the applicant believes are significantly higher than they anticipate coming to and from Freedom Plaza. So this provides a worst-case view of what we believe will be transportation effects of Freedom Plaza. The last area we'll discuss is construction. So in New York City, a noise mitigation plan is required for all new development sites, as well as permits from the New York City Department of Transportation's Office of Construction Management. And on this particular site, approval is also needed from M T A Bridges and Tunnels because of the proximity of the Queens Midtown Tunnel. So the M T A will be able to require certain conditions to protect the tunnel during construction. As for air quality, detailed modeling was undertaken. And the applicant is committing to use equipment rated by the United States Environmental Protection Agency as at least tier-three equipment for all heavy construction equipment. And the detailed analysis and modeling found that no air quality impact would be expected during construction and that placed receptors in the surrounding area, including at nearby residences in Robert Moses Park, New Wave Pier, and again, found no impact. As for noise, similarly, no noise impact is projected during construction. And no receptor in the areas is projected to experience a noise level, L-ten noise level, over the course of one hour of eighty-five d B A or greater. And that's the maximum allowed by noise code. So we're projecting that the noise would be less than that throughout the construction period. And construction effects on historic resources, the applicant will be required to prepare a construction protection plan. That will be prepared pursuant to technical procedural policy notice ten eighty-eight. And that will provide protections for nearby historic buildings and structures. So for more information on the D E I S, again, it is published on the Gaming Commission's website. The D E I S again looked at a multitude of different technical areas. I believe we have twenty-seven chapters in the D E I S, so twenty-five different technical areas, which are all shown here. So that wraps up the applicant's presentation. Lee, Robert, I believe we're going to go to the part two of this presentation now, where we take comments from elected officials, government agencies, and community board representatives.
Well, thank you, Max, for the presentation. As a reminder, tonight's session is intended to provide an opportunity for interested groups, technical specialists, community representatives, and the public to provide input on the adequacy of the draft environmental impact statement, including, for example, substantive or significant environmental issues raised, measures to mitigate potentially significant impacts, and alternatives. As I previously mentioned, all speakers should identify the specific aspect or aspects of the draft environmental impact statement that they wish to address. Besides providing comments tonight, comments will also be accepted by electronic mail and mail to the commission. Both of our email addresses and mailing addresses are listed on this slide and are on the commission's website. Comments will be accepted through five o'clock P M on September fifth, twenty twenty-five. Before we start with part two, I want to mention that elected officials and government agencies are not limited to three minutes. When it is your turn to speak, your name will be called, or the last four digits of your number will be read. We will then grant you temporary microphone access. You'll be prompted to unmute, and we'll be able to share your comment. If anyone experiences technical difficulties during their testimony, we will pause and move on to the next speaker to allow for troubleshooting to occur in the background. We will then return to you and call your name at a later time. We will now move on to government elected officials, government agencies, and community board chairs. Lee, will you call the first speaker, please?
Yes, joining us is Senator Kristin Gonzalez. Senator Kristin Gonzalez.
Hello, hi, everyone. Thank you so much for hosting this. I'm going to go ahead and lower my hand. My name is State Senator Kristin Gonzalez, and I represent the east side of Manhattan from the U N to Stuyvesant Town and Peter Cooper Village. I'm testifying today because the vast majority of my constituency has made it clear that they do not believe the social, economic, and other essential considerations of this proposed development outweigh the adverse impacts it will have on the quality of life in this community. My office has done its due diligence to collect feedback on this proposal. In twenty twenty-four, I hosted a town hall with over seven hundred residents, during which community members overwhelmingly voiced their opposition to this project. They also expressed how deeply they want to see affordable housing, good union jobs, and green space on this lot, which has been undeveloped since it was approved by Euler in two thousand eight. I want to see those things too, and certainly we know that it is possible to develop and provide those jobs without the inclusion of a casino. And that's exactly what my constituents are opposed to the impacts of, and in addition to other concerns in the draft environmental impact statement before us today. Additionally, in my role as an elected official representing this area, I appointed Sandra McKee, Chair of C V Six, to the Community Advisory Committee, C A C, because I know this community board understands the needs of our constituents and will represent us well. So while I will not be voting on the C A C, I am here to give voice to the many concerns that my office has received on this proposal. I'm particularly concerned by the impact to traffic at both the southbound F D R Drive-off ramp approach to the F D R Drive Service Road during peak A M hours and the exclusive southbound left turn at the Second Avenue and East Thirty-Sixth Street slash Queens Midtown Tunnel intersection, which the D E I S states cannot be fully mitigated. The Midtown Tunnel is one of a handful of interborough conduits, and this development could impact not only residents in this community, but those who live in Western Queens as well, which is also a part of my district. I'm also concerned about the significant adverse impacts this proposed development would have on nine crosswalks and sixteen sidewalks, especially where there is no practicable mitigation available. Pedestrian safety is a serious concern in this neighborhood and a deep priority for me as an elected official. A proposed development that threatens pedestrian safety should not be approved. If these adverse impacts to the traffic cannot be fully mitigated, I urge the Gaming Commission to issue a negative finding for the Freedom Plaza proposal. Thank you so much for having me today, and I look forward to hearing from my constituents as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Park, are there any other government elected officials, government agencies, or community board chairs?
No, there are not.
In that case, we're going to move on to part three of this hearing, where members of the public are invited to speak. As I had previously mentioned just a couple of minutes ago, when it's your turn to speak, your name will be called, and the last four digits or the last four digits of your number will be read. You'll then be granted temporary microphone access. A three-minute countdown clock will run on the screen, and you will be advised when ten seconds are remaining and when time is expired. Lines will be muted for speakers who go past three minutes. If you experience technical issues during your testimony, we will pause and move on to the next speaker to allow for troubleshooting. We will return to you and call your name later when you're able to rejoin. Lee, will you please call the first speaker?
Yes, the first speaker is Ambassador Susan Johnson Cook. Susan Johnson Cook. Okay, we'll move on to the next. Jeffrey Hotzky. Jeffrey Hotzky. All right, Catherine Demby. Catherine Demby. I think I see Catherine on the call.
Here to support State Senator Kristin Gonzalez.
All right, we hear you now. Or we don't.
Ms. Demby, we weren't able to receive your comments. If you're still available, will you please try again?
Hi, I'm actually a staffer for Senator Kristin Gonzalez, who has just spoken. I yield my time. Thank you.
Okay, next is Robert Linden. Robert Linden. Lisa Brown. Lisa Brown.
I'm sorry, I was speaking. I didn't know.
Okay.
All right, I'm sorry about that. Good evening. My name is Robert Linden, faith leader. Before I begin, let me be clear about the environmental issues I will address tonight. Climate resilience and green design, air quality and reduced emissions, environmental justice, stormwater and flooding solutions, and public health benefits. Freedom Plaza is more than a new development. It is a chance for New York City to show what responsible, sustainable building can look like. The project embraces climate resilience through energy-efficient design, renewable energy potential, and the use of sustainable materials. Just as importantly, it creates new green space, trees, and stormwater systems that will help reduce flooding and protect us from the heat island effect that so many neighborhoods know all too well. It also addresses air quality by offering a real alternatives to car dependency in a city like New York, where congestion and traffic are a part of daily life. Freedom Plaza is focused on transit access, bike-friendly pathways, cut pollution, and model how urban development can support a cleaner, healthily future. This project also speaks to environmental justice. For generations, communities like this one have borne a heavily shared of environmental harm. Freedom Plaza begins to turn that story around, bringing green jobs and healthy public spaces where residents, not just developers, see the benefits. That's what fairness looks like. The design also tackles stormwater and flooding, a growing threat with climate change. And finally, it delivers public health benefits. Cleaner air, more green space, and safer outdoor areas mean lower asthma rates, cooler summers, and healthier lives for our children. As a faith leader, I believe Freedom Plaza is more than an investment in buildings. It is an investment in people, in justice, and in the stewardship of creation. It gives us a vision of a future that is greener, healthier, and more just like New York. Thank you for this time you have given me.
Thank you. Next is Lisa Brown. I think I see her hand up.
Yes, good afternoon, good evening. Thank you so much. My name is Reverend Lisa Jenkins Brown. I'm the senior pastor of the Saint Matthews Baptist Church and also the social justice director for the United Missionary Baptist Association, comprised of over one hundred houses of worship in Manhattan, Bronx, and Lower Westchester. I'm going to be addressing the socioeconomic situation in particular. The project delivers almost five acres of public park, which is a green space for recreation, but also farmers' markets, which is so very needed, in addition to live arts, festivals, and so forth. It's also going to create seventeen thousand new union jobs, which It's also going to create 17,000 new union jobs, which we know is going to help those that are in need of work here in the New York City area, drive 3.2 billion in annual economic activity, and generate nearly 1 billion in new tax revenue, and dedicate 56 million to workforce development. These numbers are so important because it talks about the legacy that is necessary in our community when it comes to finances. Freedom Plaza is also going to strengthen our neighborhoods with over 30 dining and retail venues, partnering with local businesses, 250 million committed to nonprofits over the next 20 years. Also, we want to deal with the public health benefits. I'll address that as well. The design actually mitigates runoff and flooding, which is a growing concern with climate change. Does this by integrating permeable pavement, green roofs, and modern stormwater systems? We're excited about this because, again, not only will it provide jobs, it will provide economic opportunities, but also the 1,049 new homes, with 513 of those being permanently affordable units. This is so critical for addressing the housing needs of the people in New York City. So it's not just a project, it's an opportunity to build and to create housing. And I urge you to move forward with Freedom Plaza, because in the end, this is not about just building Freedom Plaza. This is about building freedom for all of New Yorkers. Thank you so much. Again, my name is Reverend Dr. Lisa Jenkins, pastor of the St. Matthews Baptist Church, and social director of the United Missionary Baptist Association, representing approximately 100 houses of faith in New York City, the Bronx, and Lower Westchester.
Thank you. Next is Michael Balboni. Michael Balboni. Hold on a second, Mr. Balboni. We're gonna wait to unmute you here.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Harrington. On behalf of Michael Balboni, I am a former NYPD Priest and Commander and Chief in the NYPD's Detective Bureau. I'm here to talk about the security plan and the proposal at Freedom Plaza. We have a, we believe, an integrated, coordinated, and collaborative security program featuring the best in technology, personnel, and tactics is being designed by some of the stakeholders and some of the partners in the community. We believe that the, we're fortunate to move forward with the successful and experienced security operations of the Mohican Sun Organization. Their public safety officials have been recognized across the country. Law enforcement agencies have been invited to operate on campus and provide deterrence through uniform presence and intelligence sharing. We think that's a tremendous victory for us to get, get that verbal commitment in the event that the award goes forward. We're also confident that this, this collaboration will make it a safe and secure experience to everybody who is either visiting or living at Freedom Plaza. Some of the law enforcement agencies they're talking about working with are NYPD, the 17th Priest and Up There for the Equality of Life stuff that impacts the communities surrounding them, the New York State Police, the United States Secret Service, the DEA, and United Nations. We're all familiar with the government, international communities, the healthcare, and education. They're all best in class in the area, and there's no reason Freedom Plaza won't offer the same, the same comforts and excellence that we've come to expect in the area. With that being said, I, we're, we're very happy, again, to be, to, to look forward to work with Mohican Tribes Public Safety. These are highly trained security professionals and first responders. They are going to partner with all the, the major healthcare systems and, and public safety officials in the area. I think it's going to serve to benefit our, our offering and this amount for our guests, our employees, and the surrounding community. We're real excited about the opportunity to move forward with that. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next is Kenneth McClure. Kenneth McClure. Just give it a minute for us to get you unmuted.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kenneth McClure. I'm a 25-year resident of Midtown East, and in particular, I reside at 865 United Nations Plaza. For the past 20-plus years, my business partners and I have owned restaurants, cocktail lounges, and cafes on the east side for many years, some of which you may know, the Campbell Apartment, Beekman Bar &amp; Books, Dax Patio Cafe, Madison &amp; Vine, Bookmarks Lounge, and many others. I also sit on the Board of the Grand Central Partnership and the Advisory Committee for Friends of Dag Hammershall Plaza. I've been very involved in local and civic causes related to the east side of Manhattan, and Midtown East in particular, for decades. I lived in Tudor City in the late 90s. I was there during the demolition of the Con Edison Plant, watched it come down, almost brick by brick, hearing the noise for years. And then, of course, we were all sitting, waiting, 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 and waiting for all these years that has finally come, that we are faced with this wonderful development, which I highly support. And ultimately, we're given this tremendous opportunity with the Solovyev and the Mohican Sun folks for Freedom Plaza, which, in my opinion, is a world-class resort, not just about a casino. It's, it's about so many different offerings, of course, with the public housing and hotels and much-needed green space on the east side. The west side of Manhattan has been given so much development and so much infrastructure. It's time for the east side to speak up. It's time for us to be part of the big picture of the world-class Freedom Plaza development. I've been a supporter of the project since its inception. My company supports this project wholeheartedly, and it is so much more than being just a casino. It's truly about community enrichment, beautification, and adding a world-class destination to Manhattan's far east side, which has always been less of a destination for tourists and visitors alike. And I know it firsthand, living for over 25 years on First Avenue. Freedom Plaza will bring visitors, community, and tourists to the often overlooked east side of Manhattan. As I mentioned, our west side counterpart has seen tremendous investments with Hudson Yards, Hudson River Park, and the beautification of the waterfront. The Solovyev and Mohican Sun companies, along with other world-class partners such as Banyan Tree Resorts, have proposed for us a truly world-class development, which will transform the east side of Manhattan for generations to come. Once this, once we build this opportunity for entertainment, residential enrichment, and for the community and visitors alike. I know I'm running out of time here, but there's so many benefits to the community, and I just want everyone to know that we support it fully.
Thank you.
Your minutes goes pretty quick.
Yeah. Next up is John Harari. John Harari, that's H-A-R-A-R-I.
You said that perfectly, Robert. Thank you. So my name is John Harari. I've lived in Murray Hill for nearly 20 years, 10 years at View 34 on 34th and First, and for the past eight years at The Copper on 36th and First. So for two decades, I've lived just a couple of blocks south of the Freedom Plaza site, but it's always been felt like it's miles away because it's been a dead zone for decades, underutilized, under, under, overlooked, and without any potential. As a longtime member and now president of Murray Hill Neighborhood Association, which were known for iconic structures on Park Avenue, large outdoor street festival, bringing together tens of thousands and organizing many different community-wide events. I spent two years hearing voices on the proposal. The first reaction is that many people, when they've heard about it, is skepticism, anger, and even, even fear. But once they've heard about the affordable housing, the largest park in the neighborhood, a community fund, and world-class amenities and business opportunities, they begin to open up. And I've seen longtime residents move from being doubtful to excited. I'm just here to speak on my own personal thoughts, not on behalf of the association or anyone else. And I also just want to say to all my fellow neighbors, it's okay to disagree. We live in a multicultural city with people of different ethnicities, backgrounds, and beliefs. And what I'm speaking to is the environment of whether we want to work with people who don't agree with us, or whether we want to work in an environment where people that you don't agree with, you could still work with them. And so to me, this proposal is elegant, high-end, and unique. I think of it like Monte Carlo and James Bond. Other proposals are more like Las Vegas. New York City is known for its best restaurants, hotels, rooftop views, and theaters in the world. And I believe that this proposal matches and contributes to that standard. I also believe that the site will be the most secure property in the neighborhood. They're going to have advanced technology, which radiates safety outward, which is extremely important because just south of us is the, the largest homeless shelter in the city, which has, from time to time, terrorized the area. Last year, three people were stabbed in broad daylight. Solovyev and Mohican are committed not only to security in their site, but also funding patrols and protections for the entire neighborhood through resources from the community fund. I also just want to say that it seems like there's been more scrutiny to transportation on this proposal by experts and elected officials than there is on the entire 34th Street busway, which is being looked to completely change into a, a busway without any survey studies or data gathering. I also like that Solovyev members of her family live right across the street at 685 First Avenue, and their commercial tower at 9 West 37th Street houses some of the most prestigious businesses in the world. My concern is to do nothing, because when that happens, our city rots, our skyscrapers are aging, new ones take decades to be approved, our streets are dirty, our subway system, once the pride of the world, is now falling apart. We used to have immigrants come off Ellis Island with nothing but a suitcase and their dreams, and they're able to open up pizza shop, bagel stands, and delis. And now we just have a law, mountain of laws and regulations, which include this process. But I just want to thank you.
Please consider sending any unstated comments to the commission by electronic mail or by letter, please. Thank you.
Next is John Edwards. John Edwards. Okay, Melanie Acello, A-U-C-L-E-L-L-O. I believe I saw her earlier.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Acello. I am a Tenant Association President of 344 East 28th Street, which, if you're familiar with the neighborhood, is directly across the street from Bellevue Hospital. I have quite a, I'm, I'm happy to hear from the people that live in the neighborhood that they're on board with Freedom Plaza, as are our tenants. And I am speaking on behalf of 344 East 28th Street, our board members. Our tenants are excited about this. And I do want to piggyback on the previous speakers by saying it's more than just a casino. I have the utmost faith in Solovyev and Mohican that they will ethically develop this project. And I know I can speak on this because our development just lived through a rad-packed conversion, and we actually lived through and survived a project, a construction project, that I do know how important it is to have things done correctly. I, I, we did suffer a lot when it was not done. I would like to say that I think this is a visionary project, and I love the freedom for democracy theme. It speaks to a lot of us and speaks to what we're feeling at the moment. We feel that it will bring prosperity for our neighborhood. There is nothing in this neighborhood, lots of bars and restaurants. And to be honest, my children are in their 20s and 30s. And when my daughter did live here, I mean, we, we left this neighborhood for a lot of the things that Freedom Plaza will be bringing to our community. Housing, park space, museums, shopping, dining, daycare, hotels. The casino, to me, is like an afterthought, and I love the fact that it's going to be underground. That's a first. I just think it's just amazing, the vision that, the, the visions that went into creating this. And also, as a, putting in 12 years of community service in this neighborhood and tenant advocacy, one of the things we're most excited about is the community reinvestment fund. The opportunity to put in place things that we have been trying to get here for years, to have a chance to sit on a CAC, and to have, have a say. As an underserved community, we have not been invited to have a voice in so many of the decisions that have already been made for us. So I'd like to say our community is excited about this. We cannot wait. We're, we're excited about job potential. I mean, it's going to bring life to our neighborhood, which is a dead zone. So we fully support it, and I do thank you for giving us, as an underserved community, the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dev Baid. D-E-V-B-A-I-D. Dev Baid. Okay, we'll move on. Sulak Shana Jane. Sulak Shana Jane. I apologize for mispronounced that. Tanya Arias. Tanya Arias.
Hi, it takes a while to get unmuted, just so you know. Hi, I represent, I am the Chairman of the Tudor City Presidents' Council, and the Tudor City Presidents' Council represents over 5,000 residents of Tudor City. I was under the understanding that this was more of a comment on the impact study of the project, but I can see now that we have all kinds of pro-project. I will give my comments on the amount of traffic that will result from the impact of a 2 million-square-foot 24/7 hotel and casino. What we're talking about here is that there is an, an approved, an entitled project that has been approved since 2008 for the, for this lot. That would bring housing, that would bring green spaces, that would bring all of that, the amenities that people here have been talking about, without the need of a 2 million-square-foot 24/7 hotel spa that is going to bring all kinds of traffic to the area. The study that was conducted of the 13 intersections is insufficient to measure the incredible impact that this is going to have. They say that the entrance is going to be via the FDR. However, the entrance to the FDR on 42nd Street will be affected. The people wanting to avoid the traffic on 42nd Street will probably make a left on 41st Street and get stuck on Tudor City Place. And it will be an absolute mayhem. We can do this. We can have the affordable housing. We can have the parks. We can have the buildings. We can have the amenities. We do not need the casino. And I find it almost offensive, the fact that they're threatening that if they don't get the casino, the space will just remain vacant. That is unacceptable. There is an approved plan. The community would love to have that approved plan move forward, but there is absolutely no interest in Tudor City to have a casino. The other thing that is of worry to me is the amount of water that will be used on the East River. It is, it is just an incredible thought to think that, that the HVAC system is a system that will require water from the East River to be taken out and put back in. And whether there is vegetation or no vegetation, it does impact the water quality. And I, I have to urge you to move forward with the approved plan, the entitled plan, and please move away from this ill-advised casino. The 5,000 residents of Tudor City have no interest in the casino. Please move forward with the proposed plan that was approved in 2008. Thank you very much.
Next up is Mubin Sidiqui. Mubin Sidiqui.
Hello, good evening. Sorry, as Tanya mentioned, it takes a while to unmute. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm a resident of the Corinthian, which is at the corner of 38th Street and First Avenue, and I overlook this property. I want to echo the comments that were raised by Christine Gonzalez and Tanya. Everyone's talking about the casino. With all due respect, in a very blaszy fashion, I've lived for over 24 years in the neighborhood in this very building. And I have seen just the traffic escalate and get worse and worse. I think all. No amount of quantifiable information you can put out there right now can share the experience that we have every single day living in this neighborhood. The traffic is already a quagmire. There's accidents on the FDR almost daily. I used to be terrified as my kids crossed the street to walk into the park. I would watch them till they entered the park. It is mayhem not only on the FDR, but it's also mayhem on First Avenue every single day. So if you're just going to focus on the environmental effects, I would say we already have one of the worst qualities. Done the studies done by environmentalists. And if you look at the map that showcases the air quality. It will only get worse with this much more traffic. We really do not have room for traffic. For a more exacerbated traffic. I would like to have, however, comment as a rebuttal to a lot of comments that were made here. About the safety and the beauty and the improvements to the neighborhood. I'm very grateful if people will. Put additional green space. Yes, we know, need more housing. But we cannot just brush the casino under the rug as it's a small portion of this development. It is a significant portion of this development. Yes, it'll bring revenue to the developer. But we have an elementary school two blocks away. I live in a building with 800 apartments. I know the vast mature of the building is absolutely against this development. And will be there on the 28th to speak so. But this is not a place where a casino have lived. I came here from New Orleans where I saw the city go. From bad to worse when they developed this casino right in the middle of residential areas. It completely altered the demographic of them. I appreciate that the developer lives right here, has young kids. But a casino has no place where we have family-oriented residential neighborhood, schools, the UN, we have safety issues as it is. This will just exacerbate it. We had a town hall. Last year where experts came and talked about, yes, the immediate revenue stream looks amazing. But in the long run, the cost the city has to pay in the, you know, because of the ill effects related to casinos. Far outweigh the benefits that you immediately get. So I would really urge everyone. Do not make it seem like this is a great, you know, upbeat project because the casino pretty much. Negates a lot of the benefits that you're stating from all of the other portions of the development. I would urge the developers to build their condo, the green spaces, but please keep casinos. Out of a residential neighborhood. They have no place here. And thank you for your time and.
Thank you. Next is Anthony Starrett, Anthony Starrett.
Hello, I have lived in Kipps Bay. Over three decades and it's about within a half a mile of the Freedom Plaza. And the state should not allow the Freedom Plaza to be built because this area is already overcrowded. The city of New York, the state of New York, or the federal government. Should acquire this three-block tract of land through eminent domain. And make it into a public park so that all New Yorkers can enjoy it. Beginning in the 1980s, this area has had a construction boom of massive high-rise apartment buildings. Towering over 35, 45, and over 50 stories. Especially on First Avenue between 34th and 40th Streets. Which has led to an influx of families into the area. The Freedom Plaza would add four more towers, up to 60 stories in height, to an already congested neighborhood. The plans for Freedom Plaza are for a 310,000 square foot casino. Which would make it the fourth largest casino in the country and the fifth largest casino in the world. It would be larger than any casino built in Las Vegas and Atlantic City. Also, the Freedom Plaza would have a garage which can hold 1,450 cars. Also, a museum, two hotels, a conference center, and an amphitheater. According to the New York Times, Community Board Six has the fewest parks compared to other community boards. Community Board districts in Manhattan. St. Vartan's Park on 35th Street is usually overcrowded. The neighborhood elementary school, PS 116, became so overcrowded. That the city had to build another elementary school just three blocks away from it on 35th Street. Also, there are three office buildings. Within two blocks of the Freedom Plaza site which are currently being. Retrofitted to be residential units which will add hundreds of more apartments to the area, making it more congested. Again, I strongly urge that either the city of New York, the state of New York, or the federal government use eminent domain. To acquire this three-block tract of land. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jerome Butler, Jerome Butler. Next is Alexander Arbash, Alexander Arbash, A R B A S H. Frederica Miller. Frederica Miller. Samuel Cuckly, Samuel Cuckly.
Here we go. Hi, I'm Samuel Cuckly. I live in the Corinthian and I have been. An expert in real estate as a real estate appraiser and consultant for the past 50 years. The last 22 being with a part of the real estate. Entity of TIAA-CREF. The one, one, I'm wanting to address. A part of the EIS which deals with traffic and public safety. And the issue here is that we, to the immediate south. Of the casino development are two of the most major. Hospitals in the city, Bellevue and NYU Langone. Both of those have very significant and important emergency rooms. That handle this part of Manhattan. And as one of the speakers has said very correctly. The traffic now without a casino and the 1,400. Car garage and the hotels, the traffic is impossible during certain parts of the day. And that leads to a public safety issue for people who are in. Ambulances and trying to get to the hospitals for treatment. In addition, in the immediate area, NYU has one, two, three, four major. Facilities that are immediately to the west of this development. And the traffic that comes with some of those. Facilities is amazing, especially the one on 38th Street. Finally, in terms of public safety, we have. An elementary school and a middle school two blocks away to the south on First Avenue. And there are four or five preschools located in, within just a few blocks of a casino. Casinos are not supposed to be near where children are being educated. And this is a public safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Richard Bryan, Richard Bryan.
Yes, hi, thank you very much. I'm Richard Bryan. I'm a tax attorney. I live in Peter Cooper Village and that's how I make my living. Otherwise, I've been a, for 30 years, I'm a member of the Appalachian Mountain Club. AMC is the oldest environmental and conservation organization in the United States with nearly 100,000 members. Point being, I've been through this environmental impact survey, not, not every page, but carefully enough. And I'm familiar with these types of large projects and their impact and looking at their impact. On communities. And very few large projects are so beneficial to the environment. And so this project is, from what I see, is an exception to that. It's an improvement and a benefit to conservation. And, and the, and the environment. Then you rarely, you rarely get that. You rarely get that. The second point I would make is my, my law practice is integrated in this community. Waterside, Gramercy, Mary Hill. And so I get out, I speak to a lot of people, business owners, etc. And from time to time, I want to ask people their opinions. About the project and about the casino. And certainly. There are loud voices that are opposed to the project and we'll talk about it a bit more. Overwhelmingly, the, the community is in favor. Of the project and sees the, my experience sees the benefits, the value. Of the project overall outweighing the downsides. So yes, I get it. There are a lot of people opposed and, and for good reasons. Everyone's opinion needs to be counted. No question about that. But the fact is, the majority of the community, and they may not be so vocal, are most definitely. Supportive of this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Penenberg, Sarah Penenberg.
Hello and good evening. I am testifying on behalf of 32BJ and SEIU Local. We are the largest union in property service workers in the country, representing over 175,000 members across 13 states. Including 10,000 commercial property service workers, security guards, residential staff in New York City. 32BJ supports responsible developers who invest in communities where they build. I'm happy to report that this developer of this proposed project has made a credible commitment to. Create prevailing wage jobs for workers who will permanently staff the residential portion of the project, the housing portion of the project. We estimate that this development would allow for a creation of roughly a dozen property service jobs. Good jobs like these mean prevailing wage, meaningful benefits, and a pathway to a middle class for local community members who tend to fill the position. Moreover, we need more housing in the city and every neighborhood of New York. To ensure that working families are not displaced by dwindling supply and skyrocketing rents. This proposal approved, if granted, will allow for hundreds of residential units. And a significant number of permanently income-restricted units for low- to middle-class. Income residents. At the cost of living rises and working New Yorkers struggle to stay in their homes, it is more important now than ever to create affordable housing, good jobs which uphold. Industry standards. For these reasons, 32BJ strongly supports the Freedom Project proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Kelly Sexton, Kelly Sexton.
Hello. Hey, everybody. I'm Kelly Sexton. I'm here from the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 30. We are the only trade union that is certified by the New York State Department of Labor in the field of stationary engineering. Our members are the men and women that power and maintain facilities like Yankee Stadium, City Fields, Madison Square Garden, Resorts World in Queens. MGM and Yonkers and all of New York City's public hospitals, for example. Our members work throughout New York. Our union believes in responsible development for communities. Not only does this include environmental impacts, but also human impacts. This project will create affordable housing and public parkland to a neighborhood that has been long underserved. We can attest to the fact that this project will create full-time union jobs that are family-sustaining. Including providing good quality healthcare, a chance for dignified retirement for the working people of our city. The developer has committed to a project labor agreement that ensures good jobs for construction workers and operations and maintenance workers like our members. We ask the state to consider the totality of this project, which will include the creation of family-sustaining careers for New Yorkers that will provide better lives for families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Patrick Neuner, Patrick Neuner. That's N E U N E R. We have Jean McInnes, Jean McInnes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm Jean McInnes and I'm pleased to testify on behalf of the Mohegan Tribe as the Environmental Protection Administrator. For the last 20 years within the Regulation and Compliance Department. Our Mohegan Tribe is guided by an unwavering commitment to the spirit of Akai. A founding philosophy that infuses our everyday lives with four key principles. Creating a warm and welcoming atmosphere, mutual respect, outstanding service. And building long-term relationships. While I understand that the state is reviewing the scope of the environmental review for the entire Freedom Plaza project. As you know, the proposed Mohegan gaming facility is a central component of the development. And so we thought it was important for you to hear from us, the Mohegan Tribe, directly. On environmental protection and sustainability. To us, sustainability means to create and maintain the conditions under which humans. And nature coexist in productive harmony to support present and future generations. Therefore, we acknowledge a responsibility to the environment and commit to implementing practices. Which promote environmental sustainability with a specific focus on energy conservation. In order to reduce our carbon footprint, conservation of resources through water use and source reduction. Reuse, recycling, and reduction in waste. Our facility in midtown Manhattan will be no different than our Mohegan Sun facility in Connecticut. In terms of utilizing innovative environmental strategies. Which is included in Connecticut projects such as. Early adoption and installation of EV charging stations in our parking garages. Which is now numbering 60 EV chargers. Installing variable frequency drives across a wide range of building systems from air handlers to water pumps. To monitor usage in real time and adjust our energy usage based on that demand. on that demand. Utilizing state-of-the-art glycol heat recovery technology as part of our HVAC systems, which makes heat transfer significantly more efficient. Mohegan, in this year, has $6 million, over $6 million in emission reduction credits from the submittal of Energy Conservation Project costs to Department of Environmental Protection. And I thank you for hearing me.
Thank you so much. If there's any of your comments that are unstated, please feel free to provide them to the commission by electronic mail or letter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is the initials K-L. The initials K-L.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you so much. I'll first say I support 100% the words of Senator Kristin Gonzalez. She's very polite. The casino developers do not deserve to be treated so politely. I am 100% against a casino. I have seen tens of thousands of corporate presentations in my life. This casino is by far the most delusional, insane propaganda presentation I have ever seen. Stefan Soloviev has lied about the 300,000-square-foot casino that is a 24/7 free alcohol party. Where is the EIS of the impact of free alcohol 24/7 being given out in a residential neighborhood? I only recently learned about the casino. Why? Because Stefan Soloviev, when I walked past his three-acre, I'm sorry, his three-block site, they do not put on the walls surrounding his property, this will be a 300,000-square-foot casino. Right now, the gaming board should require him to post that all over the walls instead of talking about freedom, educating people that it is a 24/7, 300,000-square-foot property. Mr. Williams, will you take that action? Will you ask Mr. Soloviev to educate our community that has been lied to? We have been lied to for years. Nobody knows about it. I have gone to many buildings in this community and spoke with the doormen. Nobody knows about it. The property values in this area will drop by 30% the minute this is approved. The 15-page EIS that I read does not mention the windows in Tudor City. The windows are not airtight. The noise from the casino and the chaos will be insane. I'm here to discuss the shadows, the noise, the public health, the neighborhood, and I promise, as one of the speakers mentioned, this is the fifth-largest casino being proposed in the entire world. It is impossible for anyone to know what will fully happen. So the next step is properly educating our community. And Mr. Soloviev, the Nepo baby billionaire, who thinks he can do whatever he wants in our community, to be honest and truthful and stop lying. So anyway, thank everyone for their time, and it's time to start filing lawsuits to block this project. That is the next step, to file lawsuits. This is insane. Thank you for listening.
Okay, we're going to go back to, I believe Ambassador Susan Johnson Cook is on the line now.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me. I want to begin by saying that I wholeheartedly support the Freedom Plaza. As a native New Yorker, as a member of a former union, and also as one who's part of the underserved community, it will provide not only opportunities for jobs, but also affordable housing, and it will also build the imprint of the city. I had to walk, I'll drive down the FDR for 13 years of my life, going back and forth to a church on the Lower East Side. And so I believe we need some more economic development, more opportunities, particularly for women in construction and underserved who are able to work on this project. I have had the opportunity as a faith advisor to be on the Faith Advisory Committee for the Freedom Project, and I wholeheartedly support it. I've had a chance to sit with Soloviev, as well as faith advisors and others who have the opportunities to work on this project. So I want to register my support, both as a native New Yorker and as one who can help those who want to be employed to have opportunities to do that in the city of New York. I believe this is a good project for this time, and that we need to pick me up. And so I am stating my total approval and support. Thank you for having me at this time.
All right, next, we're going to go to our raised hands. First up is Deborah Shine. Deborah Shine.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a resident in Murray Hill, 311 East 38th Street since 2003, and I strongly object to a casino being brought into the neighborhood. I believe it will decrease the quality of life in the neighborhood, and it's the assisted neighborhood that's already heavily burdened by traffic and pedestrian congestion. It's due in large part to the proximity to the United Nations, NYU Langone Hospital, and the Midtown Tunnel entrance. Introducing a casino will only worsen these issues, further straining the area's infrastructure and diminishing the quality of life of the residents. I own my own apartment. It's a simple one-bedroom, and I believe that it's going to decrease the property value having a casino in this area. And after listening, I listened to the Community Advisory Committee on June 17th and noticed that the references to affordable housing does not indicate the square footage or anticipated red structure. Furthermore, the question, what red structure constitutes affordable housing, was asked and not answered. Moreover, all the amenities that the casino promises, this is dependent on the revenue from the casino. Casinos have notoriously not produced anticipated revenue, and therefore, will this be running out of a loss, or will this be running, being able to produce these amenities? There's really no guarantees on that. It's the, it's already difficult to access the FDR Drive, and the traffic is horrendous as you're driving down the FDR Drive. I don't understand how a dedicated entrance on the FDR Drive could improve the traffic. Recently, congestion pricing has been put into place. There's been some marginal improvement in terms of the traffic and the congestion. I believe this will reverse all that improvement that we have seen so far and not do anything to improving the quality of life. As the community said on January 11th, loud and clear, that a casino is not welcome in the neighborhood. A casino, and use my view and many others, is a tax on the poor. And it will increase, it will, it will increase crime, it will bring in other people into the neighborhood, not necessarily workers, but people that have other interests, and it will definitely not improve the quality of life. Already, we have the hospitals in the area, and all that, they said this will be functioning during evening hours. I will say that the hospitals, the ambulances drive down the First Avenue during those hours.
Any unstated comments that you have, if you would consider sending them to the commission by electronic mail or by letter, they will be accounted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Robin Graubard. G-R-A-U-B-A-R-D.
Hi. I am 100% against the casino. I've lived in this neighborhood since 1978. I feel like casinos are breeding grounds for gambling addicts, prostitution, drugs, alcoholics, guns, and lots of traffic. So I would really not support this project. There are plenty of parks in the neighborhood. There's the UN Park, there's, you know, parks all over, there's the New Greenway. I think we just don't want a casino in this neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, the phone number ending in 1196. Again, it's the phone number ending in 1196.
Hi, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I just want to say that this is a very unique opportunity for the city to bring in as many affordable housing units as is proposed in this project at zero public costs. We spend a lot of time in the city talking about how much we need more affordable housing in the center of the city in particular, and there are very few plots of land left to build new housing. And this is a chance for us to add to that housing stock with modern, beautiful buildings that will add to the overall character of the area, I think. I certainly appreciate concerns about the presence of a casino in general, but this is a very multifaceted project, in my opinion, beyond just the one addition of a casino to the neighborhood. I think the green space that will be added to the area is one that will bring value to the community in the long term, and it will be a valuable source of additional tax revenue for the city. And I do think the proposed designs for the buildings are very architecturally significant in a way that will make it one of the most iconic places in the city, in my opinion. And note on museum, too, I think we can all appreciate now more than ever how much it is important to offer opportunities for people to learn more about the importance of our democratic system and ways that we can protect that system. So I support this project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of our list of registered speakers and individuals who have indicated that they would like to speak for the raised hand function or the star nine function. So at this time, I think we will take a break until 7 o'clock and allow people the time to register and to allow the time for anyone who has experienced technical issues that was not able to otherwise be heard to troubleshoot and rejoin us. So at this time, we will break for approximately 12 minutes and return at 7 o'clock. See you then. Well, we have returned to tonight's public comment hearing. Mr. Park, has anyone registered before the 7 o'clock hour or has raised their hand?
Nobody has raised their hand virtually, however, I think that there might be one person who might have reached out to there.
Okay, yes. Rosalyn Hoffman, if you're still with us online, we noted that you would seem to indicate that you have an interest in presenting. Do you have an ability to unmute yourself?
Yes. I would just like to say that I think it's very evident that those who are in favor of this proposal have their own personal agendas. They represent unions, they represent businesses, investments in this area. They do not live here. They are not residents of the Murray Hill, Kipps Bay area. And I feel that if we eliminate the casino, we can completely resolve this controversy. Just eliminate the casino and the gambling, and it's a win-win situation. They all get their jobs, and we get a nice residential area. I think that's a very simple solution to this controversy. Thank you.
Will Sid. Thank you. Mr. Park, is there anyone else who was indicated an interest?
Yes, Elizabeth Cohen.
Yes, hi. I agree with the lady who just spoke. I think the thing that we object to, I live in the neighborhood my entire life, and I think people who have spoken out in favor of the casino, in favor of everything, are people who do not live here. They represent organizations and other people with vested interests, not residents in the neighborhood. And I have to say, this neighborhood probably has the largest number of schoolchildren in it, from elementary through high school, both public and private and parochial schoolchildren who are in the neighborhood, and a large number of families that raise their children here. It also, the site is right, not in addition to being right next to the UN, which has its own traffic situations, is right next to NYU Langone and Bellevue, which are the only hospitals providing coverage for almost the entire downtown of Manhattan. They, there are, the other hospitals have been closed, and they're not really serving this entire area. And adding additional traffic to that location for a casino is going to be dangerous for people's health in terms of getting them to and from the hospital in emergency situations. It's going to expose children to gambling and casinos from a young age and probably encourage kids to do things like drink. It's not something that belongs in a family area, and really, an area that has been about working people, middle class and working people. I think the idea of developing the site for housing and a park is good, and in other ways perhaps, but not for a casino. And I think the casino does not belong in this residential area. I feel very strongly. I know my neighbors also are, were shocked to learn about it recently, and I think it would be an enormous mistake to put a casino here. I'm not against developing the site for housing or in other ways, but not in terms of a casino. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak on the issue. I appreciate it.
Thank you. It is my understanding that there are no more remaining speakers, and no one has indicated an interest in providing additional testimony. We've passed the end of our scheduled time, therefore, the public comment portion of tonight's hearing has now concluded. As a final note, if anyone has had difficulties providing comment tonight, please submit written comments by using one of the methods that's on the slide that's presented right there. Comments can be emailed to kristenbuckley, that's K-R-I-S-T-E-N dot B-U-C-K-L-E-Y at gaming.ny.gov, or they may be mailed to Ms. Buckley's attention at the address listed, 354 Broadway, PO Box 7500, Schenectady, New York, 12301 hyphen 7500. Our email address and mailing address are listed both on this slide and on the commission's website if you fail to write them down before we conclude tonight. Comments must be received by 5:00 PM on September 5th, 2025. As I had mentioned earlier, tonight's hearing has been recorded and will be transcribed. The recording session of the session and the transcription will be available for download on the commission's website when they are available. The time now is 7:05, and the public comment hearing is now concluded. Thank you so much for joining and providing your comments tonight.